Thank you. 3:06, let's all stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A jeopardy contestant did not know that 1957, we added the two words, "under God."
I knew that.
I couldn't believe that they didn't know that.
I guarantee my kids don't know that.
All right, so we'll go ahead and have real call. In attendance, we have Doug, Bob, Claudia, Ed, and Carol. I need a motion for approval to find an agenda.
So made.
Second.
My motion is second. If they will say aye.
Aye.
I pull a comment, Chelsea.
I'm going to floor aside.
Chelsea can do it.
Two.
I have two. Looks like they're both on an agenda. First one is Marty Mantenfeld regarding access to Gateway and location of the new building. Just reminder, you have three minutes. I will start the timer after you, and now to your.
Marty Mantenfeld, Breeno Drive. So on Memorial Day, Monday, the Pelican Preserve. Pelican Preserve.
People Association General.
I'm having a senior moment.
Flags for great flags.
No, no, the farmer's market. It's canceled because we had a veterans memorial ceremony. So I figured, oh, no big deal. I'll just go over to the one at Gateway because they happen on Fridays right over here at the soccer fields. Well, you know what? Gateway is really not accessible. So I find it easier to walk across the street at Tree Line and go to Winn-Dixie than to come all the way over here for a farmer's market at Gateway. So your assessment methodology is really flawed because you're not really accessible. Because if you were, okay, your new building could be located at the corner of Tree Line and Colonial. We have plenty of commercial space over there, but if you were all over there, you wouldn't be accessible to Gateway. So I find your assessment methodology, therefore, flawed. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, next is Vince LaFredo regarding Resolution 2025-11 and Gateway/Lee County.
Hello, everybody. Vince LaFredo, 9871 Blue Stone, Stony Brook. Going through the methodology report that's been passed in a resolution and several pieces of wording, and I have questions about, number one, page 309, chapter 190, the definition of services specifically for benefits of its residents, meaning Gateway. And then on page 288, the wording is, "These parks and rec facilities are anticipated to be used by residents of Gateway Services." In addition, news came out last year after the voting last November concerning the general obligation bond up to $75 million for Lee County. And of course, the announcement came that a significant part of this was going to be for parks and recreation. So in essence, we will be paying taxes towards that general obligation bond to Lee County, and now we have a parks and rec here at Gateway. And we're tied into that group bond. So my question on the wording, as far as the resolution, I have questions about. The other part in the methodology was the fact that we know that Stony Brook was to take over the roads this year. All of this has been done. We've had a lot of words said, a lot of legal action. My question is, why were terms of the Stony Brook roadways included in this methodology? One, the fact is that after this fiscal year, it should be in the responsibility of Stony Brook. So I've had questions on that because I think the terminology was, I want to get this right, soft gate, which is something I wasn't sure of. That's the roads behind the gate at the entrance, which was noted for Pelican and for Stony Brook. And how we could measure it in fiscal '26 if Stony Brook has ownership of the roads and not Gateway. That was all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Nope, I don't have any other ones. Okay, Tony, you want to touch on Vince's last question regarding why was it, why would we retire to have Stony Brook numbers in prior to?
As we're going through the budget process, it becomes a timing issue. And the goal is, from heck or high water, that the road will be conveyed to the Stony Brook Master Association by September 30 of 2025, just a matter of trying to wrap up that pre-letigation settlement agreement in order to have that come to fruition. So that's not yet achieved. It's in WCI's hands. Lennar, Charles Mann is working with their in-house counsel to try to move that along for us. But the district and the association are all walking together. But for purposes of setting potentially the high watermark, that number may need to be in there. Well, yeah, or in the alternative, if it's taken out, then we've talked about how that happens. I think we can talk about that when we talk about the budget.
Well, it's safe to air that it's in.
Yes.
Rather than having it out and then finding out.
Yeah. Again, the question becomes, and this becomes part of the methodology, I guess, the baseline is Stony Brook from this standpoint. And the board may want to say, well, we anticipate us not owning it. We can still have the high watermark now for the assessments for Stony Brook for the road. But as far as the baseline, maybe go to another baseline, a roadway network for the baseline. Anticipating it ultimately will be owned by Stony Brook before the new fiscal year starts, if that makes sense. It's two, it's kind of two moving parts.
Any questions for them? You have nothing else? Nope. Local community's imagination, do you have anything? If I can leave the items to report, have anything? All right, so move some proof of minutes.
So moved.
We have one for in a second. If they will say aye.
Aye.
Who was the second? Sorry, we're two at the same time.
Three.
Everybody knows.
I'll pick Ed since he's next to Carol.
Consent agenda items.
I'd like to at least have a discussion of B. I'd make a motion to approve A and C. And B for discussion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to approve consent agenda items A and C. Okay, we have a motion in a second. If they will say aye.
Aye.
Question I.
And just a question on C that we just approved, but is that the last one thing that we have with community association?
The last we know of.
For landscaping, yes, aeration is a whole different kind of one.
Right.
It should be the last landscaping.
But I'm not going into irrigation or anything similar to it, but just for landscaping, we have all the easements that we need now, right?
We think we do, yes.
Okay.
There may be some further considerations in the future with regard to some conservation areas. 50 and 52 and all of it. Right now, this is everything we have. And I'll work with Mark Adamczyk to wrap up those documents and attach exhibits and get that recorded.
Oh, if you're talking about B of the bill.
Yes.
Yeah, but what I was going to ask on that, I don't have any problem with any of the documents, but attached to it is something, Laura, can you go to that page that threw me for a loop? It's Storm Sewers in Champions Green, which doesn't have anything to do with anything. What is that in the Villas section?
Where is that?
Keep going. There's about six pages of, it looks like, yeah, here you go. Storm sewers in Champions Green. This doesn't have anything to do with the Villas at all. I don't know what that was.
I don't know either.
But my question was, keep scrolling, Laura, please. There's a picture.
Yeah, I'm not paying using a picture for any exhibit set.
Well, I understand, but this is, it brings up, one more, please. Next one. There you go. This is Champions Green right in front. What I don't understand is, because we just had an issue over there at Champions Green. I was of the understanding that Basin 4 storm sewers were all totally done. And this implies that we've got to come back and do, says work needed, see, report. I don't know what report they're referring to, but I thought every storm sewer in Basin 4 was done, had been cleaned, was over with, kaput, the whole nine yards. And this very yellow one that's on the angle under the word Champions is one that's problematic. If that's not clean.
I'll follow up.
Yeah, I know, but my real question was, this doesn't have anything to do with Tony, with our Villas document.
Correct answer, it's a two-year-old map, like Chelsea said. Like Chelsea mentioned, it's a two-year-old report. So it's a two-year-old report, so we'll update that with Tetra Tech in there.
Everything else that we were to do for the Villas, to my knowledge, is done. So I would then go back and make the motion to approve item B.
I have a motion in a second. If they will say aye.
Now I will go with Mark Adamczyk to wrap everything up.
To wrap it up.
Yes.
So we'll go ahead and move to, not District Engineer, we don't have anything else. Admin agenda items.
Oh, under District Engineer, I did see big equipment out there at the Commons Park today, and they were actually moving earth. They were moving up and down and actually moving earth, first time.
They've been out there for about a month. They're done with the clearing and grubbing, and they're getting ready to.
Yesterday, it was just piles of dirt.
Oh, no, there's.
I might guess that, you see the truck with the furniture?
No.
And I saw it. Some kind of a dwelling for the contractor.
Yeah, it's a construction trailer.
Construction trailer.
We posted aerials. Their OAK is taking pictures monthly, and we're posting the aerials that they send us so the community can see the progress.
So when did they actually start?
They're starting foundation work in the next two weeks, digging.
When did they actually start?
Oh.
Stakeout?
A month ago.
About a month ago.
Yeah.
And our estimated time of being done is still?
Until I get an updated schedule from them in the next two days, but April is still the deadline.
On 26?
Yes. Ready for administrative number?
Yes, ma'am.
So 11A. Ed, do you want to share on this?
Yeah, what it is, is Hamlet Cove, in their agreement of transfer of assets back in 2015, one of the items they included was the fence that went around the west side. You got a picture there?
Yeah.
Around the west side and the south side of their property. Unbeknownst to us, when we were doing it, we didn't catch it. But the fence was extended down into the L and E. Yeah, if you can see on that picture, it says into proposed fence. That's where it was supposed to have ended. Where in actuality, it went out to that 25, it's written in deal, 25-foot extension to the stone. That's where it was actually located. Well, the contractor came in, did the lake bank work, had to take all that fence out. Now we're getting ready to put it back in. And in order to put it back in, we need to prepare an EUA. And the EUA is only allowing it to go to the point of the fabric. And so we've had to change the letter that we had written to be, I believe, 25 from that endpoint, whereas in reality, it's now to the fabric, which is only about 12 feet, I believe.
So there are three, as part of this pond bank restoration project, there were three fences from three different entities on this pond. So we're trying to make things right and approach each of these entities and say, hey, you need to fill out the easement use agreement. If you want the fence to continue, pay the necessary fee. And this instance, Hamlet Cove, Gateway Greens Masters Association, they paid the $500 fee. They're requesting the waiver of it. That is why it is on administrative items instead of consent.
And I'm going to ask that the waiver be extended to all three of the entities. The entities being Gateway Greens Community Association, Royal Greens Community Association, and the public Gateway. There are those, all three of them, all three of them are $500.
Staff recommends the approval of this easement use agreement, but the waiver of the fee is up to court.
And we've not waived anything before, right?
The only one you waived was the.
The tree.
Donatary.
That's something different, not this. And that's because we're in the middle of, I'm not sure what is applicable.
So I just need your direction on their request for the waiver of the $500.
I'd make that motion.
Just to have a motion on the floor by Ed for a waiver on the fee for the three entities. You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. If they will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
All right, so you approved the easement use agreement?
Yes. Okay, it was, okay, you're going to clarification, then we looked at me.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion that Ed was made was to waive the $500.
Fee.
And that's what I.
For all 300.
Yes, and I go to no, you go to no.
I voted.
I go to no. So motion is now passed, and it's going to pass along that information. That's what we said.
Okay, okay.
I don't know if that's actually looking for clarification, but I just gave it.
Ed and Doug voted yes, and then the other two voted no.
Correct. To waive the fee.
The fee, but then.
We haven't had a motion yet on.
Ed, I, yes, I'll make the motion, so I'll make a motion to allow the easement for the three properties that we just talked about.
Well, I don't think the other two have submitted an EUA yet.
Not yet, just to prove that's.
Only us.
My motion is for just the one that we have.
I'll second that, too.
We have a motion in a second. If they will say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
We communicated to the other ones.
Yeah, staff is working with them, so we'll make sure that we know about it.
I tried to let the new superintendent know, and he had no clue what I was talking about.
We emailed him.
He would.
We emailed him. All right, ready for B? This is the one that I alluded to earlier. So we need direction regarding Town Lakes. I did approach, thank you, Ed, for the contact. Vince Sardo, he was the last known director of the property owners, the defunct property owners association, and he is unwilling to sign an updated quitclaim deed. He.
Not willing?
He is not willing to sign it. His statement, he sent me an email that he signed it prior to the POA dissolving, and there was money from the POA to the district. I have not confirmed that. But in his mind, it was resolved 10-plus years ago. Ultimately, we have about $100,000. This kind of ties into budget. We have about $100,000 that, over the years, we've collected from those handful of property owners. We've got a couple of options. I'll kind of turn it over to Tony and let him explain those options.
Yeah, the one, the first question is whether or not the original quitclaim deed was delivered to the district or not. We're not able to ascertain that. I have an email.
We know the answer to that. It was. It was held up by our manager.
Well, we don't know that.
No, if I can, what I have is an email that was sent by Vince Sardo to Bill Knight saying attached is a quitclaim deed by the email. So that's not the original document, you know, at the time. It was a copy or attached. So the first question is, was the original delivered to the district? And if it was, then we can validate that and find it. The district can, when the deed is delivered, it has to be accepted by the grantee, like in this case, the district, or it's not valid. You can't just record a deed or give a deed and say, here, you now own the property. Acceptance is one of two ways. One is by act, like the board would accept the deed, that's an act, or by action, that the board would take steps to indicate that it does control and own that property by maintenance, repair, reconstruction. So over the years, because the district has, Chelsea, we worked on those roads in the past, to your knowledge?
I'm not aware of.
If the district has, it's spent money.
We have, I think when Brian Bush was here, we did, we're striking on that.
Yeah, so to that extent, then, that, the action.
That's part of the issue.
Yeah, the action would then qualify, arguably, if the deed was in fact delivered to the district. And so that's like step number one. Do we know if it was actually delivered? If it wasn't hand-delivered, the original, the district doesn't have it, the alternative would be, if Mr. Sardo does not want to sign a quitclaim deed, that was one of the little wrinkles, is to file a quiet title action utilizing the copy of the deed that we have, since we're on the original.
That was delivery of the deed.
And the question is, who would you have to name as party? It would be that we, the district, are asserting that we are the owners. We want a quiet title, and anybody else, we probably have to name all the property owners in Town Lakes and say, you know, we're naming you because you may have an interest in the road, you may have an interest in the road, et cetera, and get a court to say a quiet title in the district. We've named WCI also, and they would probably sign stipulations saying, have that, we don't care. But that's the alternative. Unless we find that original deed, then we have to go through the quiet title.
Or option three.
Which was much easier if he signed it again, right?
Well, option three is spend on the money and stop, stop.
But that really doesn't solve the problem. The answer is, Vince's argument is real simple. I signed it, I gave it to Bill Knight. We know Bill Knight had it, because Bill Knight sent a letter, I believe, to Tony indicating, hey, I think I screwed up.
That was on an email. That was, that was an email, Jim.
But the issue is, that's an acknowledgement, at least he knew about it.
Yes.
The issue is, Vince's position is, I signed it once, why do I need to sign it again? Now, if what Tony said was in the past to me, was that it had errors in it or deficiencies, that's a whole different bug. So that means that whether we find it or not, we've still got to correct.
So then if he did, then why didn't we just fix the, can we explain that to Vince?
I spoke to him for over 30 minutes trying to explain that there were errors, that there were inconsistencies. We have a new one that contracted by legal.
Have you spoken with him, because you have a relationship with him, after knowing that there are errors, he's not willing?
He's pissed. He's just pissed.
But pissed doesn't help us.
He felt like that he was betrayed 17 years ago, that this was all over with, should have never happened. Somebody got the ball.
So then at his point, he doesn't want to fix it now? I understand he's pissed, but.
That's what I, that's what I asked him to do. Please sign this now and get it corrected and get this over with.
I asked the same thing, and he said, he said he was unwilling to, that, just use the one from 10, 15 years ago. And I had him follow up with an email saying he was unwilling to. I even had him print it out. I said, I can meet you, or you can come to the office, and he was unwilling to.
We had copies of it, but we do not have the original.
That's correct. I think that's the problem. And again, Florida, when land is deed property to someone, it does not have to be recorded to affect the transfer of title. But it does put the whole world on notice that you are now the owner of the property. So if we had the original deed, even if it was not recorded, we could still then notify the property praiser, hey, we had the original deed in our office. It may not be in a condition to record today because the entity is now dissolved. This happened before it was dissolved. But we can get the property praiser to change the record, but the key is that we can find that original deed.
Well, the copy that you have is a copy.
Correct.
And the copy that I have that I got from Vince is a copy. So the issue is, and his claim was, is that he turned it over to Bill Knight. Now, the question is, is this place, or is, it could be anywhere.
So Tony, the option that Chelsea was talking about, just spending down the money, don't levy anything more, and don't do anything more, is that as legal as all the stuff with the title?
Either that, you have to refund the money back to the property owners. Yep, that's the choice. You're spending down to, because the district has easements in there for utilities and also ingress and egress for purpose, I think. Not this one. One of them does, one doesn't. But we have utilities, and so it's appropriate to improve the roadway to be able to access the district facilities in that property.
Okay, but then, let's say that we go back. Let's say we find, let's just say we find the deed. It still has errors, and it still needs to be addressed.
Yes.
Okay.
If we want to, we can.
Finding doesn't really help us because there's two errors, and if we are aware of errors, then we have to fix it. So that's why I don't understand why Vince is so, like, here's the page, and we found it, there's errors.
Did you explain to Vince what the errors were? He asked me, and I said, I don't know what they are.
I didn't know.
Well, it's a very strangely good description. The acknowledgement is very awkward and fine.
So maybe we can give it another try, maybe.
We need an answer because this affects the budget, so we can either use.
Well, we're going to recontinue this meeting, so maybe we can reach out to Vince again. So you can explain.
Yeah, I know if he wants to talk to me, he doesn't like me.
Okay, Ed, would you be willing, will you talk to Tony? Tony will give you all the information on the orders are.
Here.
You contact Vince, and then we'll follow back on Thursday.
Let's do this.
There's quitclaim deeds. Give him sign.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, here's my deal. What's the difference between this one and the one that Vince signed?
That's what Tony's going to tell you.
Okay. Because he asked me, what are the differences and what are the errors? I said, I do not know.
Well, first of all, it references an exhibit eight, if not, well, he references a plaque. And again, it's, and the acknowledgement is just not an appropriate acknowledgement. It says sworn to and subscribe before me, December 12, 2007. The party of the first part and second part appeared Vincent Sardo.
It's not.
But the issue is, this is corrected and takes care of all the errors.
Yes, yes. You tried that. You have a signature.
We have plenty of memories in the office. We all even come to the house if you can get this.
And then it goes on to say that he acknowledged to me that he, she, they executed the same in his or their authorized capacities, and that by his or their signature on the instrument, the persons upon behalf of which the persons acted, executed the instrument.
So I think we have a clear shot of, again, Ed having a conversation with Tony, getting all the information so we can relay that to Vince and explain, even if we found it, we still needed it.
One of the other things that Vince mentioned, which I tend to agree with him, is the property owners have changed probably tenfold in there in that they may be unaware of the situation and that by doing a quiet title, what Tony was suggesting, that would at least give them the transparency of them trying to know.
If we do what?
A quiet title action.
Quiet title.
But knowing about it, but the money stays with the property now with whoever pays, so it is.
Yeah, they're not.
It's only going to piss them off, like, oh, thanks for having this money, but I'm not going to be able to have the money. Thanks for letting me know. The money stays with the property, doesn't stay with whoever had the property at that time. So I think, to me, I would disagree with that. I would just, I would like.
And what we want to do is to use that money to benefit the property and get that over with. And then not assess those people anymore.
Tied to the property, so it's not tied to, that's just my.
You just can't picture that.
I guess what really we need direction from the board as a whole, is this the direction you want to proceed with getting this, and if not, we'll need to make a decision next Thursday.
We've got seven days to try to get it done.
Okay, so we'll let you know in seven days?
Hopefully you'll be convinced, more convincing than.
I'll take that day in.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so do you need any money for?
Can you take those cookies?
Knowing what the errors were will help, because I couldn't explain that.
And that's what I think. I think if we explain that, even if we found that there was still errors.
Well, the acknowledgement, the legal description is very awkward. It's very unusual.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Ed, for taking on that. Next. Back to budget.
C.
Well, I thought we were going to take this until the meeting on the 12th.
We're not going to.
Because I don't want to vote on the.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, yeah.
I don't want to vote on the high watermark as it's being presented today.
Well, the other feeling I thought is, are there any other issues that are in the budget that we need to talk? What we know, we got the issue with the capital reserve, about how we're going to spend that money in the bond. Are there any other things that we need answers, you need answers for upon it?
Laura has a list.
I have.
Let's start with the easy one. We just talked about Town Lakes.
Yes. Are we going to assess for them or not? Or do you want to just leave the reserves in there and just use that for whatever?
We'll have it on Thursday.
Well, we have to revise all of our tables if you're going to assess.
I see no reason to assess them, anything, to only complicate it, make this worse.
We have $98,000.
We got $98,000.
Yeah, this is more than enough to cover the landscaping costs, so.
Okay, so we will.
I would suggest we not assess.
Not assess, thank you.
Thank you. Number one, done.
Thank you.
Not assess.
Okay.
All right. My next one is Stony Brook, C. If you want to assess them for this year, we need to update all of our tables. We calculate all the road things.
Two things. We had a, we had a resolution that said it should have been done by today. It's not going to happen. I think we all, like Tony said earlier, all, we're all in agreement. It's just a matter of getting the attorneys to sit down and agree on the documents and get it ironed out. Now, it's two, it's two different issues. So it's, the budget as a whole is impacted if you keep Stony Brook in because that affects your roadway baseline assessment. We can choose not to assess Stony Brook at all and just use their reserves, which they're trying to spend down, but you're not assessing anything for next year's. If this falls through.
And, and. And the base will no longer be, I think we were talking about, and the base will no longer be used as Stony Brook base. It'll be Gateway base.
The version that you have in front of you is not using Stony Brook, it's using Gateway. We assume.
Oh, yeah, we did that. Okay, so that's good, okay.
And worst case scenario, we could special assess it after the fact.
But I would, I don't typically.
Yes.
No, I'm just saying, there is a. Tony, do you see anything that's standing in the way, other than getting the attorneys to do the work, that this thing is going to fall apart?
I guess two things. One is, I think Stony Brook and their council, district and their council, are all on board as to the, I'll call it 99% of documents involved. In the standpoint, Charles Mann had initial comments on it. They weren't major. And he's talking with in-house counsel at WCI as to, and Lennar, to try to get them, their input and suggestions. So that's. So that's really, it's the internal issue. And they were busy doing the end of the quarter kind of analysis, they were tied up, so.
I don't see a point in assessing it.
Oh, no, I, I, again, it's a matter, I think it's going to be achieved.
And like Doug said, I, I, I think we might as well assess and if it comes to it, hopefully not.
We can either use their reserves or we special assess or we.
I'm optimistic.
I think it's too much work.
I'm optimistic, number one. Number two.
I don't.
And as to, if the board decides at some point that they would need to, and go back and special assess, it would be a direct bill and not a tax.
So selfishly, selfishly, work-wise, I would rather not assess.
No, selfish, yeah.
But it is, but it is a risk.
Yes.
I think it's a manageable risk.
Okay.
Do, I might ask, this was, oh, JT, right? You saw the board, right?
No, I'm not. That's why I'm here.
So I am confident, you know, we've had meetings, we have, we're continuing to have meetings with their H O A on Cal. They're going to spend down these dollars by September thirtieth. Like, like Tony said, it's just a matter of getting the attorneys on the same page, sign the same document.
Everybody seems to be on the same page, is like you and hopefully have the attorneys trying to get the work done. Yeah. So I, I don't see a special assess.
So then we will zero out the Stony Brook oh-oh-four fund for assessments for high watermark. Okay? All right. What else is on the list?
Uh, the capital reserves. We talked about, um, the, the five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. I need to, if you don't decide today, that's something we definitely have to finalize next week at the meeting. Are we going to assess? Are we not going to assess? And to know, so I can either remove that, change it, up, put it up, put it down, take it out, doesn't matter if you, we just need to decide. Doesn't.
What?
Just trying to say, has something done in the past. Why don't we just hold off on that for another year? And I know that's kicking the can down the road, but, um, it's hard to compare apples and apples when you throw in something like this.
You're not going to, right?
But that doesn't bother me so much, but we don't have the answer how we're going to do it. That's the problem. I, I can go on.
In other words, take out the five hundred and fifty-one thousand from the, all the different things and let's, let's just operate next year.
So we don't.
And then look down the road.
I, I wouldn't, as much as I don't like looking down the road, I think that's probably the cleanest with everything else that we're juggling right now.
But we, if we don't, and then we get a surprise between now and next Thursday, we could be really up the creek without a paddle of trying to get an answer.
Last, last year we did, we do have in the fiscal twenty-five budget, we have two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for fixed asset reserve.
But we, you did.
That's in there right now?
That, it's in this current year's budget, fiscal twenty-five.
So you did have.
Is that a part of the five fifty-one or is it an addition?
No, 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 five fifty-one is for fiscal twenty-six.
So fiscal twenty-five.
So how about we match that? How about we do, so then we come in a bit.
Then you can do apples and apples.
Yeah, so how about we match, do two hundred and seventy-nine thousand instead of the five fifty-one?
I'll have to divvy it up then.
But you have to decide how you want to divvy that up between the silos.
Do you want me just to do it as a percentage of what you're going to assess?
Just pro rate.
Yeah, just like I went with the other two.
We're, I can, by the way, the silos, so. Well, I can take it as a percentage of like what you were going to put, take the total of percentage of total, I'll just take it as a percentage.
You'll, you'll take that, I have.
Okay.
I think so, right?
That, that, that sounds reasonable.
That's easy, that's easy to do.
All right, so that's the direction.
That was good. And then the last thing, uh, we failed to discuss it at the last meeting, it's because Carol wasn't here to remind me.
I actually did it.
You, you tasked staff with reaching, doing a survey of what is most important to them.
Yes.
And regarding F R S and salary compensation and P T O and benefits, et cetera. Um, so Laura has, um, that information. Okay, uh, so we.
Just a minute, please.
Sent that, we sent out a small survey to the, to the staff. I think eighteen of them responded. It was an anonymous survey. We did get feedback from them. Laura did talk to them prior to sending it out to kind of preface with, you know, this is what you anticipate. From a staff perspective, uh, obviously, they prefer money in their pocket rather than retirement in the long run. It was a close match between the two. She's got the survey results that she'll share.
Oh, yeah, sure.
We did not take into account F R S or any salary range sliding of the scale as part of this budget. If you so chose to, Laura's also surprised, no surprise, has those numbers.
I'm going to stretch you.
Um, that we can show you and plug in if you want to do either of those options or none of those options.
So they prefer the money?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll see that. We ask what they want, so.
So it was close. You can see salary and insurance benefits and retirement benefits were, are near.
Just because they have a salary, do they think they have more options with insurance and that sort of.
Yep.
You could have really other.
The question was to prioritize current benefits in the order most important to you, starting with most important. And then like salary, insurance, retirement, then P T O. We had eighteen people who responded. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it's about half.
Well, not, a little over half. I don't know who did or didn't because everybody got the same link. So I, I truly have no idea who responded.
Okay, so, but you already added four percent into the budget.
But that's standard every year. That's our normal merit increases that we have.
They wanted an adjustment.
But that's not base adjustment.
Correct.
That's just marriage.
Yes.
Okay, one-time bonuses.
No, we do it every year. We have merit, well.
Up to four percent.
Yeah, yeah, up to four percent of a base salary, so it's just, it's.
Okay, so they can get a raise every year on their base?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Within the salary. Within the salary caps that we have set.
Because we have, we actually had that happen already, right?
Somebody hit the cap?
Somebody, somebody hit the cap, so, so while you can get up to four percent and even you exceed your expectations, but you met that cap, you're not going to get anything.
There's three or four people that are there now.
So, so here we are, an employee does exceed the expectations because he's capped, we can.
But, but what they do, how we rewrote the manual, was, let's say you cap out fifty thousand dollars. If whatever gets you to that fifty, you're going to get to that fifty thousand and the rest is going to be a one-time bonus. It's not going to be a base, added to your base every year, so you're going to stay at that fifty thousand dollars every year.
And the leftover is a bonus.
The leftover is just a bonus.
If you get it.
If, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so we, I asked here, um, because this was something, and this is, this is pretty much the same answer that I got the last time that I asked this question, which was two years ago, two, two years ago. Um, if we were going to subsidize it, uh, what did you do? And the majority of people said that I wouldn't add any money. So you had asked if it was benefiting, I said, well, that's what they had said and it's still, it's still the same.
Yeah.
Or they wanted half, so that was either not a dollar or a five. And then, um, I did this, I did add this question here. I didn't give a ton of information, this was really all I got. I just said that we're looking at making a substantial investment to move the F R S. Um, that everyone would be eligible, including part-time. If we were, make the move and you choose to participate, um, you have to contribute three percent of your salary. Uh, the majority of them did say yes. Uh, I learned a lot about the F R S after this survey went out. So basically they said yes, some said maybe it depends on, some said no, and some were like, eh, I don't care, whatever, so.
A lot wanted more information. Very, very good questions that they were asking. But after we discussed internally, um, if F R S is a viable option, I think that we, we should kick the can down the road and consider it. Get more information, maybe even have them come in, uh, do a dog and pony show. That way staff have the opportunity to ask all the questions. That is a large investment. I think our staff are worth it. But, uh, right now with everything else, that, I feel like that would be a lot. I would rather do some due diligence on the F R S program, uh, because it is maxed out at, at three percent.
You have, you can't, you have to contribute three percent, can't be more, can't be less, you have to contribute three percent as from an employee's standpoint.
So that could be.
We talked about match.
No, what the employee has, that employee contribution. Yeah, that you can't do less or more, you can only do three percent.
So like right now, we both do more, we would.
There are quite a few people who do more, but they would actually, you know, they, they can, they would be able to do less. Um, I did ask about the vesting because that was something that came up as far as like that eight-years, one-year thing. Because we have a retirement plan, or our, um, our retirement savings that we have right now is invested immediately from day one. Whenever, if and when we switch to F R S, the counting starts from that day. So you can't purchase any prior service, like I've got you over five years, none of my five years count.
You would start at day one?
Yes, everyone starts at day one because our other plan.
Previously would stay vested in that sub, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
So the alternative was looking back at the salary, adjusting salaries. Uh, we did a major overhaul, if you recall, maybe two years ago, and, and we were finally competitive with the market. Right now, it's, it's, we're, we're still competing, we're still have open positions. So Laura did some numbers, as always.
So, um, what I, this, some of these are numbers that you have seen before, like right now our costs, we contribute, we match anywhere from three to five percent, depending on how long the employees have been here. And our annual cost to the employer is about fifty-five thousand dollars, so it's not a, it's not a large cost. If we were to move to the F R S, our estimated cost would be about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a year. So that would be an increase of two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for retirement benefits. I looked at, I put everyone on the sheet, if we gave everybody a two-dollar an hour raise, it would, um, the total amount would be a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So this is the difference between what we're paying for retirement and this number, so it would be.
Okay, it's fifty-four thousand and thirty-seven.
Yeah, so it would have to be eighty-two.
This is for eighteen.
You're saying two.
That'd be, that'd be four thousand times eighteen, seventy-two thousand, so it's pretty close.
Why do you have two an hour, four an hour and not just a percentage?
Well, this, because it would be to increase the pay ranges by two dollars an hour. So like if your pay range is twenty to twenty-four, we'd make it twenty to twenty-six. Or if we went from twenty-eight to twenty-eight, you know, if you raised, if we raised the, the maximum pay range by either two dollars an hour or four dollars. So the, the, the first two lines are related to retirement, the next lines are all related to salary changes.
There is percentage stuff.
Yes, the percentages are there. So I started with flat rates. Did, if we, if we move the maximum with every pay range by two dollars an hour, this would be the impact. If we move the maximum pay range for everyone by four dollars an hour, this would be the, the thing. If we gave everybody a five percent increase in their maximum range, this would be the impact. If I did it eight percent, it would be here, ten percent here, and four percent here.
But this is also challenging because you, this is, you're looking at, uh, flat increases across the board. But I don't know, I don't know, I could find out easily, but if you look at where we're at, where are we most competitive? Where do we need to be more competitive? Like what roles are we challenged by the county, the city? And most of those are going to be probably, well, it would be hourly and, and more mid-level managers, so it's probably across the board. But, you know, if what I'm hearing you is we're on average right now. So we are competitive from a compensation perspective. But are we also competitive with hours, with benefits, with, is this, on a scale from one to ten, are we an eight on a great place to work? Look at ten years and that's another thing we have to look. So there's a lot of contributing factors. I like personally, I mean, I would, I would love to do the F R S. If we had seventy percent of, of our positions, um, where either they come in from the, uh, from an environment that has, um, F R S and that's really all we care about, because if they lead to go somewhere, that, that impacts us negatively. But I don't know if that's the case. I know that there's some positions, but I don't think if we look at in totality, because we have to do this all or none, right?
Yes.
So if we look at in totality, how many of our employees are how many, what positions are, are, uh, are potentially impacted from individuals transitioning in? I think that was one of the, one of the areas that we said, hey, like you said, from the, from the beach. Some people won't go if there's, if there's not, um, an F R S because they're already contributing to it. But if you look at the amount that we spend and the actual benefit, cash on hand is not the benefit here. It's down the road and it'll be eight years for them to invest. What is our average tenure at the district? If it is not greater than eight, then it's a negative return for most. And, and if you really think about it, people are going to say, well, that's great, but, you know, the average tenure is, for most roles are three to five years or three and a half or twenty, I don't even know what it is.
Probably three to five is fair.
I love the concept, but I would much rather have the ability to be more competitive on wages. Even, even sign-on bonuses or, you know, things of that nature to have more capital for us to really attract and retain than to contribute to F R S. And I, and I would look on the medical side too, the benefits might be.
We could.
We did.
I know, I know you guys did, and that's difficult too, because.
Do you have a, do you have an hourly, I feel like I'm more inclined to the percentage versus the hour.
So we, we recommend the percentage because.
Yeah, I think the percentage is.
Because like two dollars an hour for a person in the field versus two dollars an hour for someone like me or Chelsea is.
Two different things, yeah.
Okay, so Doug, if, if I would like to be looking at this with the pay range, the five, eight, ten, or twelve, what, what is market these days? I, I really have no, no.
It varies. I think over the last, so, three percent is historical. Most people would increase three percent. Now, you saw a couple of years ago where that increase was about as high as ten percent. Because coming out of COVID, people needed a higher. So people were leaving and getting, actually it was upwards of almost twenty percent at, at some point.
Yeah, but today.
But, yeah, but, but today.
Let me back it today.
Just today.
I'd say five percent is probably a good, good area, but we don't necessarily have to add, we don't know if five percent is, is the number across the board. You have to evaluate each area in each role, right? So if it was me.
But this would be the pay range that would increase five percent.
What I would say is what we approve is like what we did a couple of years ago. We approve, we, we approved a bucket of dollars to be allocated towards merit or other things. So we don't necessarily say we're going to guarantee everyone gets a five percent increase across the board. We say that the board has allocated a certain dollar amount to be assessed by staff and, uh, and then allocated in certain areas. You know, I think everyone will get an increase, which is a plus, and I think we could all agree, if we're going to do it, let's do it across the board. But there are some areas that we will need, that might need seven percent increases. Others might need three percent because we're already comparable to, to what the market is.
We've got to talk about, sorry, you're talking about the range itself.
Yeah, right, yeah, so that's, yeah, that was, yeah, that was, that's a different thing though.
Okay, I would like to recommend eight percent.
That we set aside the dollars for eight percent, or you're saying you want everyone to have an eight percent increase?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, like, you said different things. I would say everybody, me, I have an eight percent.
Which one do I want to say, Doug?
So, can I try to? They don't, everybody would not get eight percent.
Right, up to.
No.
No.
You would increase the range.
It's still ranged.
Eight percent.
Those that are currently bumping the cap.
Right, so.
I don't think, I don't think you put a percentage in.
It's up to, it's up to, because you may only get a dollar because you're already within that cap. So that's, it's still a bit of a percentage or something, but.
A pot would be asked that would give us the leverage to go and evaluate does, are we, are we comparable with the.
So the, he did, and then the, the.
Total works are comparable.
Well, here's, there's a way that we can do it, and I think for staff, if there was a, a message that we wanted to send. When we did it a couple of years ago, we said everyone's going to get at a minimum, what was it, three percent?
We have, well, we have.
No, no, I'm not talking, I'm not talking.
I think we did two, two percent.
A merit.
And then two percent merit is what we did when I first started.
Yeah, with up two and two, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we set a baseline, okay, we're going to, we're going to allocate X amount of dollars and everyone gets a set percent increase, at a minimum, two percent, two and a half percent. And then, and then there are positions that could get more, just based on market conditions, you know, whatever. So, but at least you're setting a baseline, saying that, okay, the board has approved a flat, uh, increase, a merit increase of at least two and a half percent. And you may get maybe more than that. Uh, it's, you know, and we have to justify that, it's market conditions, it's team and role, it's, you know, whatever that is.
Was there anything for bonuses?
What, what pocket of money would you put with that then?
I would.
Because I would.
I'd say even though I wouldn't go as high as.
If most people out there are doing three percent raises, are getting a three percent raise next year, I would, instead of two and a half, I'd like to make that three percent. And then if you do that eight percent range, that's another five percent.
Yeah, I, I think, if I were to make a recommendation, I would probably say that we would shoot for eight percent and guarantee a three percent rate, uh, increase across the board. But we also need to make sure that, you know, like the staff needs to validate, because we might have.
I have four people right now.
And then give them a bucket.
The five.
But if, yeah, but if we took the increase to the five percent and guaranteed a three percent, everybody would get at least a three, there wouldn't be anybody.
Yeah, that is, I'm sorry.
I'm not, so I'm saying I'm not sure eight is, is the right one.[1795.11]
How many people do we have that are at those?
Four.
Four.
I have four.
So are they all in the same classification?
No.
So why wouldn't, before we do any of this, why wouldn't we wanna see, how many classifications we have? Five, six?
Well, two of them are in utilities, one is in administration, and one is in public parks.
I'd like to see where we're at, who's the, who's at the top, how many are at the top, in to make the determination, do we have to do the same percentage to everyone?
No.
So why couldn't we have one class that might have or need an eight, and another, and another one has no need for eight, you could do five.
Well, there's gonna be additional due diligence that should take place. I mean, we should be looking at all of our roles and classification.
Yeah.
And, but there's also, you could have, so here's a problem that happens a lot of times in these areas. You've got three field supervisors, they're all at different wage ranges. They can be based on tenure, you know, whatever. So, and you wanna make sure that that's not necessarily true, Doug, they could pay the same, but you've got, uh, let's say if someone has seven years of experience versus three, well, that logic might tell you they shouldn't necessarily be at the same, the same, the same range.
It may be that like, a lot of times, you get in a position, you're gonna have somebody, you pay what the market is, and how you get yourself in that corner.
The problem that we're in now, because a lot of companies, like I said, had to overpay by twenty percent.
That's how you get in that best.
And then, and now they're laying off all those folks, they can't afford them anymore, and it's not there. But my point is, I think if we set a minimum, and that's good faith across the board, everyone's gonna be guaranteed at least a minimum X amount. And then we also have an additional bucket that staff will analyze, and we can, you know, we can help with that. Say, are there specific areas that we need to increase due to market conditions?
Yeah, I'd like to see the classification.
So put numbers to that idea. If you had to make a motion right now, it would be.
I don't have enough data.
I, I would suggest a suggestion. Give us the pot, let us do that evaluation, because we need to go, we need to compare comps, and they make, the, the range may be subject to a five percent change, but their performance and their whatever.
Only one, the two percent. But this is not a, this is not a performance, I didn't wanna look at the classification.
So you want a pot of dollars?
I would prefer a pot of dollars.
Oh, good. And what I'd say.
I'd say just one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
I would, let's see, okay, I was thinking somewhere around the five percent, because you're gonna, everyone's gonna be guaranteed, we're gonna guarantee at least two and a half, or three, whatever the number is, and then you'll have the excess upwards of five across the board that you can use for select roles. So, I mean, one-ten, one-twenty, I mean, I think that's a pretty decent.
Seems pretty generous.
Five percent is of, is of what total?
Well, if we increase everyone's pay range by five percent, it would be this one-hundred-and-ten-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety.
That's what it would cost us to do that.
No, 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 no. The cost would be much less. Because the only way it would be, cost of that much is if everybody was at the top of the range, there are not, oh, only four people.
Yeah, but what, what I'm saying is like, if you do five percent, we're only, let's say guarantee three percent across the board. So you, you take, there's, there will be, uh, if you say, okay, we're, we're gonna fund it five percent, but we're only gonna allocate it three percent. So there's gonna be some additional dollars, and that's where those additional dollars would, would be specified for specific areas.
Okay.
And again, you might have, you might have an area that, you know, two roles that need a seven percent increase to keep up with market conditions.
And I understand, certainly, I do have one question about the FRS, because my heart is, would like the FRS. I choke at the thirteen percent raise. But were we to adopt it hypothetically, would, would it be appropriate to say, because we have incurred this extra cost for your benefits, that the, the salary bumps for the next two or three years would be a lot lower? Would that be a negative?
It would. That, that.
See, and that's what I got from Laura's survey. There's a lot of people that do not want it. They want the cash.
They want the cash in the pocket now.
So as much as my heart says I like FRS, if I'm being employed, that's what I would want.
But what scared me that's been said is that the FRS is a problem based upon employee retention to have stability long-term.
Correct.
That doesn't sound to me like that's what we got.
Yeah, but I, and I, I agree with what you're saying.
Will it create it? That's a different story.
But if we're at, and I don't have any data to support this from the district, but if our fall-off was happening at year five, year six, then I'd say, okay, maybe there's, and, and why? Like, people are leaving for the county because they are, they're looking for long-term commitments? I don't think that's our case.
So can I make a suggestion? You do a compromise. So you do a, a pot of money this year to help, help slide the scale, and leave that to us to figure out. Give us a year to figure out if FRS is really worth, worth the time and investment, and potentially make that diagram next year, but not, not this year. But give us, give us.
But it's gotta be a trade-off if we go with this one. It's gotta impact either the bonuses. It's gotta be something.
Well, it's gotta impact.
Because otherwise you're like fifteen percent raise for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, the, the FRS has to, because it's a cost of, it has to impact something in the district. Our tenure, our ability to attract, I mean.
It's a shame if FRS is awkward, Doug.
It is, it is. If those people that wanna get in it, if we could just get it.
Because here's the other thing, too.
For a comparable program that they might volunteer.
Well, here's the other thing, too, that we didn't talk about. It's great for us to say, we have an FRS program. But if we're not comparable in pay ranges, it's for none. So even though we're funding this, we still have to have continued conversations about allocating additional dollars for merit or competitive compensation for specific areas. Maybe not across the board, but I think what I'd like to do is, we'll allocate a dollar amount, but we also need to specify, I would like to specify a base percentage for all employees, and, and maybe we go, you know, three. Maybe I'd be happy with even two and a half.
Let, let us do that, please.
Well, I, I, one last question, I'll get off of this. But since we, say historically, get a three percent raise, we don't also bump our ranges three percent anymore?
No.
You mean your pay range?
No.
No, because that just helps.
It'd double.
Then I'll have a, I'll have a meter tech making sixty dollars an hour if it never stops. And that's the hard pill that is, that is always to swallow, is the position pays what position pays.
But there is also, like, if you're in a band, and you've been with a company twenty years, and you've been a field specialist that twenty years, you will get, uh, most companies have additional band grades for a specific role. So very rarely do you hit a spot and say, we can't ever pay you anymore because you're at the top of the range.
Well, we have.
Well, and that's something we have to correct, or.
Yeah, because I told you all seven.
And that's sort of saying that somebody that's exceeding, like this, a thank you to another job.
But you're good, like, if you're, if you're.
Well, then you're big enough to vote, I hope.
But you can't hit a ceiling.
Or you just tell, change your classification.
But we don't have one.
That's what we.
The bigger companies do that, you got all kinds of.
You don't have to be, if you're a, a lineman, you can jump to something else, but you've gotta get training to do that. If you're not willing to do that, you stay, I know in a hard cheering field, you stay in that field, and you're gonna get maybe cost of living, but as far as a pay raise, you're not going to.
Yeah, and honestly, we don't have those positions where.
Utility did a lot of what I'd say.
Yeah, we established.
But what Chelsea's asking for is a dollar amount.
Yeah.
I would like to suggest one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
That's.
I can't see much more than a hundred thousand. One-hundred-and-twenty-five is a lot.
Well, one-hundred-and-twenty-five is, would it be what?
Be about eight percent.
Eight percent, yeah, okay.
Well, here's the thing, too. It, that doesn't mean that you can just. Like, we want to. We want a one-hundred-and-twenty-five, like, it has to be justified.
No, but if you give them the pot of one-hundred-and-twenty-five, it's gonna be used. If you give a pot of a hundred, it's gonna be used.
Yeah, but maybe there are some people that they need to keep encouraging.
Well, then, people that you don't wanna give it to are those that are bumping the scale.
That's what I'm saying, the classifications do not have to be the same. There's your answer.
So one-twenty-five?
Yeah, one-hundred.
One-twenty-five, one-hundred.
I like one-twenty-five.
Okay, I'm good with one-twenty-five. One-hundred for Bob.
Pretty young, Doug.
Kind of.
We're looking at, our costs are going up.
I mean, for me, it'd much rather have.
We're talking about the range.
But I don't, I don't want Chelsea's staff.
No, we're giving the money. We're talking about a fixed dollar amount of money. If you give them the fixed dollar amount of money, it will be spent.
No, it's giving them the opportunity.
How, how about we get up to one-twenty-five? Does that be better? Anytime you're spending, you're spending, I think it'll be like one-twenty-four, nine. So up to one-twenty-five?
Yeah, I'll work with whatever you guys propose. If it's a hundred, we'll, we'll evaluate it, and maybe everybody gets one percent, two percent, I don't know.
But again, we're not talking about an increase in salary.
Correct.
We're talking about.
The range.
Raising, raising the range of that classification.
Right.
And what it sounds like.
No, 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 that's not what he's proposing.
Actually adding three percent on top.
Dollars.
Dollars on top of everything.
Yeah, but I understand that, but eight percent and three percent. Eight percent is only, or seven percent, six, but whatever the number is, is only the range. You still gotta get salary increase.
Well, they're talking about giving a pot of gold, forget the range.
Yeah.
Forget the range. They wanna give them a check, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, to distribute, without regard to any change in ranges.
No, 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 that would be mid-range, that change would be that.
No, but the intent was based on what, do you want, you know, some?
You need a schedule to see this classification to what their ranges are, so we know what we're talking about. You've got four people in one range that are at the maximum right now.
Can you pull that up?
I mean, range isn't up on that Friday. Range should be adjusted, I mean, annually anyway. You should be looking at your ranges.
But then right now, we need a number to put in the budget.
The further it's going on Friday, the further till Friday, and get some.
Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday. Fridays, Thursdays.
Thursdays, Monday.
I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing.
I know, that's what I.
Pay ranges, which does not impact the salary.
Okay, Doug, could you go along with a hundred thousand?
Right now, I have no idea what the increase is gonna be, so it's just a bucket. I mean, I'm fine with starting with a hundred, and if they have to come back and say, look, hey, based on evaluations, we have a shortfall of fifteen thousand dollars in order to be competitive.
Fine with the hundred.
It's either we're, we're trying to be competitive or we don't.
All right, so a hundred, that's fine with that. And then you come back to us on Thursday and you say a hundred was fine, ninety-nine was actually better, or I need one.
We might not even be able to, so here's the thing. We don't, we don't allocate everything right out of the gate. I mean, there's gonna be, and this is what I wanna make sure that we, that we don't do necessarily, is we're gonna go with a certain percentage, and then there's some roles that are open that we have to, let's say there's an open role right now, and we aren't getting the.
Project manager.
Project manager, and we're not getting the, the candidate flow that we need because the market is dictating, you know, ten thousand more.
We're not competitive.
Right. So this bucket would allow us to.
Take that money.
To adjust the range to, to Ed's point, but also offer that entry or have more flexibility on some of these roles. So we wanna impact salaries, you know, at the next review period, at a certain percentage. Areas that we need to adjust, it's not a payout, it is, we're going to adjust the, we're gonna increase this particular role a certain amount, let's say it's five percent because of market competitiveness, or, or whatever, it's market increase. But it also allows us to, to adjust both existing pay and to Ed's point, adjust the ranges. But this dollar amount doesn't, what we're, what we're giving staff really doesn't impact the range necessarily, but we still need to make sure that our ranges are, are, are validated against market conditions.
So you're asking about, like.
So do you like a hu- a hundred thousand?
It's fine, it's a good starting point.
Okay.
And, and it may be, it's an ending point as well. We just don't know, because we don't, we can't look at everyone's salary, we don't know what market conditions are across all roles.
Okay, we'll take the pot. Thank you.
Where do we?
What else?
Hundred.
I know we're under the dollar, the pot. What did we do about the ranges?
I love my Thursday.
You'll come back, okay, thank you, I'm good.
And again, ranges can be adjusted at any.
I'm okay with the ranges.
Understood, understood.
I was, I was telling the board more.
So your issue with the ranges is the fact that we've got four people, or five people hitting the max, and that needs to be resolved.
Well.
Especially is if they have merit for an, an increase. I mean, like you said, giving them the money and then giving them a difference in bonus, what do we get a comp?
Well, but here's the, the, the simple solve there is, and I think we do this, you have field specialist one, field specialist two, field specialist three.
Yep.
And so once you max out of field specialist one, you get bumped to field specialist two if you meet the requirements for that advancement. But, you know, you just don't keep increasing people just because they stay enrolled for fifteen years.
And that, that was the pill that was hard to swallow for staff this year when we implemented labs.
Last year was already, too.
Well, we did, because I, I remember that conversation with staff about that, and it's like, you, for once, you control, you may go get this certification, go get that, and then you can control that, so.
Okay. All right, we beat that horse today.
Okay. What else?
Uh, my last thing is the Pelican Preserve Adnan Building Assessment. PPAK has requested that, that amount for the shortfall be assessed this year. Ultimately, it is up to the board if you agree with that or not. Historically, the board has gone with whatever PPAK has recommended. I just need to know what the board's wishes are for that particular line, so that I know how to handle it for the budget.
So PPAK wants to assess?
They want to assess.
And so.
Just, for, needs for purposes of high watermark.
And access, yes.
So I would like to go with PPAK's recommendation.
Okay.
And then, um, see if, based on other information that they've gotten now about in, um, interest payments or money and all that sort of stuff, if maybe they want to then change to reserve. Because we can always go down.
Yes. Yeah, they have, they have until August to make that decision, right, so.
We most importantly, yes.
So for purposes of high watermark, we'll keep it in there. Got it. Yeah, that was the reason.
Now, do you, do you want to go through each fund and have any questions? We have this time and next Thursday, before we have to prove the high water. So nothing's, really nothing. The only, the only thing that has changed as of today is we have the H and GP match for the grant that we received of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We wanna make sure that we assess for that, just to the gateway side.
To get the free month.
To get the free month.
Absolutely.
So, but by at least getting it at the high watermark, it can always come down. Stephen, that'll give Stephen, Laura, and myself time to look at all of our funds and see if, maybe that's a.
Never turned out a free month.
I, I'd like to see this between, let's say, Wednesday and Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, next week. You're gonna do these calculations, you're gonna start seeing, the numbers are gonna start following in place. If that number comes out that where you're over, let's say, thirteen, hundred dollars, thirteen hundred, just say that as a number. Come back with a list of one, two, three, four, five priority of what it takes to cut, or what combinations of items it takes to cut to get it into that number. So we don't, so we're not here at the meeting trying to figure out, we've, we've done this before. Just sitting here arbitrarily, let's have a list of.
That's what, that's what we do.
We have a list of cuts.
That's what we always get.
Yeah, I know, let's have a predetermined.
But you're talking about the gateway numbers.
Oh.
Yeah, well, I'm assuming we'll do the same on both, but the issue is, is that let's have our alternatives and options to cut if we have to cut.
And can I ask a clarification?
So are you, are you wanting to go from the thousand-eight-hundred figure, which includes the bond payments, down to thirteen hundred?
Yes.
Are you talking about the fifteen to the thirteen?
With the bond or without the bond?
Eighteen to thirteen.
The eighteen.
To thirteen.
So thirteen.
That's with using the interest and all that that we talked about.
Including debt service.
Including debt service.
So a hundred, because the Lake Bank went up fifteen.
Included but debt service. So the eighteen hundred dollars, which was the high mark that we put in this, on the street, that is the number that we're going to bring back down, my request is that it doesn't, if, if that number, you know, I was looking at it right now, and it's done, and it says thirteen hundred or less, I'm happy.
What's the debt service number going?
Well, Lake Bank went up fifty bucks, fifty bucks this year, so that's a direct impact right there.
Yeah, those numbers are fixed, there's not much we can do about those.
But the other part was the twenty-twenty-three bond series, where using that interest and paying that, so that would go to zero and see where we fall.
And then next year, if we spend more money on Lake Banks in twenty-six.
Hopefully, it's, it's dwindling, because we have two ponds to finish that are under contract this year that are gonna be kicked to next year because of another nature, but we're waiting for that grant to do the.
Oh, if that comes in through.
Yeah.
That's terrific for everybody.
Yeah, I'm just saying, let's, let's have options that we can discuss to use to cut, to, to act a bunch of that, should we have to do that.
Okay, so your goal is to get the total assessment, including debt service, thirteen hundred dollars or less.
Uh, my objective is the eighteen, whatever number was on that green sheet, to thirteen.
Just say yes, Doug. Thirteen, that's what you have.
I, I don't have a say, I want it to be the number, or the numbers are.
Right.
I, I don't wanna, I, I, the last thing I want is to dictate it, I want it to be.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
I know, I know. What you say and what somebody else hears is two different things.
I, I just wanna be able to, that we have to cut, I wanna have staff telling us what are our options to cut. We may not even have to cut.
Yeah, the staff and each other are, you know, we can tell each other what we think, but to me, Laura, just whatever the numbers are, that's what they.
Well, the threes and whys difficulty is because of this new methodology with the silos and everything. Taking something out of X may not be as advantageous as taking it out of Y or Z, so you gotta, you gotta look at that now. It gets a little more complicated.
But you can't focus on doing it solely to equalize assessments. I think you're not. You can't use the guides, the North Star or the gold, the guiding light to equalize assessments.
That's right. It's going to be duff now.
Well, no, you're not trying to equalize.
Not trying to. He's just making it clear he's not trying that. No. Whatever the numbers are.
You're not arbitrarily.
Whatever the numbers are, are the numbers are going to be.
Yes.
And then they can give us suggestions. We can cut it and we can give suggestions and you can give suggestions and the residents can give suggestions.
You have resources and funds.
Again, it's still the high water part.
Yes, you got that. All right.
Okay.
Next.
That's all I have for budget unless anybody else had anything else to add. You answered all the other questions.
Thank you. All right, so swap for the hearing.
I suggest Madam Chair, you have a motion to open the public hearing for consideration of the adoption of revised schedule of rates, fees and charges. If you can entertain a motion.
I'll make this motion.
Well, I have a motion by.
Open the public hearing.
And I have a motion by Bob to open the public hearing. Go ahead, second. I'll second. It'll be seconded by Ed and Chair.
Aye.
Aye.
No, Carol stepped out of the room for that vote.
Wait until she comes back or?
Sure.
Well, it passed.
It did pass, but.
No, it hasn't.
Why?
We just opened, we just opened.
Here, now we got a vote.
Oh, yes, yeah, we're going to, we're going to. I think that's what this is.
Yeah.
And Chelsea, Laura, is anyone registered to speak on this topic?
Nope.
If, is anyone submitted any comments, email, fax or by telephone? Thank you. And for the record, the updated publication is in there of the timely advertising of the proposed schedule and fee schedule within the hearing. Meet the statutory court.
So every year about this time, we do the fee schedule for the general fund. This is general fund only for the rates, fees and charges mainly to help coincide with the leagues and the rental of the soccer field. You've seen this before, anything and read as proposed changes. So just some minor, minor changes per household, things that we've learned as we're operating. Food truck vendor cancellation fee, we have these to our events that they require the fire department inspection. And so we try to coordinate that with costs and things like that. And so.
Where is this?
The food truck vendor cancellation fee.
Where's this form? Or this, the.
It's twelve.
Twelve A.
Twelve A.
It's page one fifty-one of the book.
One sixty-two, if you're looking at the electronic version of it.
One of the other issue, one of the other things that we had this year was we had a lead that there was some, a fight. We asked the league that anytime that they had competitive championship matches that they have Lily County Sheriff's Office come out at their cost. So we wanted to make sure that was included in here as part of the fee schedule and the event that we had to dictate that to them.
I'm used to that for soccer events for adults, but even for the kids?
Kids, yeah. Parents.
Wow.
Can be rough to.
It sounds better, but wow.
The only question I have is on the sliding scale for the food truck vendor cancellation fee, what is the proposed sliding scale? It says T. To be determined. We need to have a.
We need to have that. Okay. Well, we can remove that for now.
Okay.
We'll iron that out for the next go around.
Okay.
And then that's pretty much it. We adjusted the rates for the fields to, you can see all of those. That was per that schedule that we had a handful of years ago. I did calculations, but I.
Could have been reasonable.
I'll, I can email.
Five bucks.
You do it fast.
I do it in Georgia. What if the dog park is going to be?
Gone? It depends on if you vote for the construction funds or the funds for the half million dollars for the expansion of the parking lot, of the existing parking lot in the budget. If you choose not to vote for that, that'll kick back in.
I know, I already agreed last year.
The design is pretty, we're, it's coming back to you.
So what do you, like parking lot will go into one of the dog parks?
Where the dog park is.
Parts of it, yeah. But that's, that's a, depends on the setting we need.
We have to, the dogs being, their grass grows really good.
So this is what we're proposing for next, for, to go into effect, so that you adopt it, you choose to adopt it.
Do you want a motion to approve?
Yes.
I make a motion.
Well, first of all.
You have to open to the public for comments.
Close the public hearing. Cause you already opened the public hearing. Yes, for any comments? There's no comment. And so I think it'd be appropriate to move to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I, I just, one second. Can we just reassess the, and just have a reasonable conversation around like the dog park fee? Fifty dollars annually seems like a really low number with.
The residents.
Yeah, but that, but remember how we talked about, we talked about three years ago, four years ago, like that we wanted to keep cost as cost, like so the dog people can eat in the dog park.
The reason why, I mean, and we had Ed Ron come in, remember? Ed said the whole, the driver behind the dog park was to provide a, an amenity that was not readily available. And that it would be self-funded. That was the design. It was that it would self-fund itself. And now what has happened is we're replacing sod.
We're subsidizing a lot.
And there's a lot going on.
And we're also doing something for anything else.
Yeah.
But, but, but we are upping, like, I think on the leagues, like, that's the only thing that I remember us talking about before. The leagues, we, we came, I think we said about four years, it would be a hundred percent because it, we couldn't do it. We couldn't do the whole amount of year one because it was a huge increase. So we did say there was going to be a four years or maybe three years that by the three-year mark came, which I think is next year, is this year. Oh, so this is it. So we're not, we're not subsidizing anymore.
But that's, Ed, you bring up a good point. It's like for our amenities, how much are, of the revenue that's generated, how much is, what is that percentage of total operating cost? Is it, you know, so. I'm just, I think, I think your point was. If we look at other amenities, let's say like the field usage versus the dog park. I think that the fees should be in line with each other. Like it shouldn't, like we shouldn't try to cover more expenses for the dog park than we do for the fields. Like it should be, it's an amenity. We should have a a threshold of what, how much of that do we want assessed? So what we've said, eventually over time, we want it to be a hundred percent funded, but we know that's not reasonable. Like we get fifty percent. But I don't know what the dog park is. So what is total revenue over total operating expenses for the dog?
We don't have that readily available, but if you want to, if you want to increase the rates, even if it's a twenty-five dollars for the next fiscal year, we can go ahead and do that. And then we can do exactly what we did with the, with the soccer complex and bring that back.
And how many total dog park passes to, or members do we have?
Maybe a hundred and.
And twelve is the last one.
If you wanted to just quick back at the napkin math, we have a budget for SAB installation of twenty-five thousand dollars for the dog park. And we have projected income for the dog park of, I just lost it, uh, seven thousand.
We're only at five thousand.
Five thousand.
Five thousand, six hundred.
So we're, it's a twenty thousand dollar pool.
That's.
And that's just, that's just sod. And that's not, that's not, that's not, because irrigation.
That's not, we, we moved that, we moved that in and also the benches and everything else and, because they are very vocal about the needs.
So I'm, I'm not a fool to go in and up on that.
When you say that it's fifty dollars right now and up to two free cards per household, what does that mean? Every household, okay, we get.
If, if you and your wife both wanted an access card for the dog park, you pay fifty bucks and you both would get.
Okay, so you get this included.
It's like your fob, is your.
Yeah. So if you want to go up on, on that.
Do we, do we have additional card costs? The cards are none. I mean, like eighty-seven cents.
Yeah, it's, we have, we have.
We have a charge if you want to buy more cards?
Yes.
What did you say, what did you say the revenue versus expenses, right?
The revenue is fifty-six hundred.
We're at like forty, a little shy of five thousand right now, plus.
Expenses for what?
And the last time.
We have twenty-five thousand, we have twenty-five thousand dollars budget for sod.
Just sod.
And I think I remember the, we taught Mr. Ford, the operating expenses including sod, I think it was like thirty.
Oh, we're here at thirty-five dollars, sure.
It was like thirty, thirty K. That was one sod replacement a year and then additional.
Part of it. It was not a one sod. It was one, it was either.
One sod, one sod or the other, right? We rotate. But I, I think the, what we, what is the budget? What's in the budget?
That's what I'm saying. What is the current, but look at that financial.
The budget for SAB for the dog park is twenty-five thousand dollars.
And then what else?
But what else? Because I think it's separated.
Because of the way that the main, the main skip contract was redone, I don't have that checked separately anymore.
Then I know. Can you look at the financial ended the month last night?
I am.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm looking at it.
That, that's all we have?
Yeah, that's the only thing that's broken down.
You don't have repairs and anything?
Nope.
So we didn't, did we buy any furniture?
No, locked under R and M parks.
Because we moved it last year, right? Because they used to be, okay, so.
So why don't we increase the fee from fifty dollars to seventy-five dollars? And then ask staff to bring back next year a figure that would cover all costs.
Are you going to raise non-resident as well then?
To one seventy-five?
Yeah, sure.
One seventy-five.
By one seventy-five.
Do we have that many non-resident?
We actually do have quite a few non-residents.
Do it.
Wow. There are. Take a man to JetBlue, walk around for ninety. Into the runway. Let's chase birds.
So resident to seventy-five, non-resident to one seventy-five.
All right. Any other changes?
And then come back next year with covering all costs.
Well, I think two, they have one. Well, but I think if he's not there, then it would have been the comments, right? Because that's really cheap just.
Yeah.
And to be fair, we ought to have seventy-five for the big dogs.
I mean, there's no way, there's no way under current conditions can you do this at a hundred percent because I'm going to pay two hundred and fifty, three hundred, well, maybe. I mean, if you want to do it, that's what would be charged to the dog park members, two hundred and seventy dollars.
Well, you're mixing up current usage. You get more members and your rate.
Yeah, so Bernard or what's going to be different this year than next year?
Bigger park than.
New location.
That's more cost though. You know what I mean? Like you can't, that's like, we want more, we want more people to go to the pool, but nothing's going to change.
Scott used to say that all the time. The dog park is.
You get paid by the weight.
Okay. All right, so no, no other questions on this, so. A motion to.
Close the public hearing.
Okay. Do you want me to make that in the form of a motion to close the public hearing? Yes, please. Oh.
Are you making the increase?
I know, you already did that.
No, we just gave you the direction.
I tried to close it. They wouldn't let me. I'll second.
We have a motion to second to close the public hearing. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is closed.
Now, now we have to make another motion to change these amounts?
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion to change the amounts.
So dog park resident to seventy-five dollars and non-resident to a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
And then you're going to have, we're removing the food truck vendor cancellation fee and?
Yes.
Second.
I made that motion.
We have a motion to second. On favor, say aye. We have a fee schedule.
All right. Thank you.
All right, we'll notify the league simply having all ready.
District manager, I have.
I have a couple items I just wanted to bring up. Julie retires on June twentieth. She's counting down the days. Just wanted to let you guys know if you do stop in the office, please thank her for her serve, her, what, nine, nine years of service. We have, we had our annual meeting, corrupt meeting with the county to go over projects and expenses and future planning. What they're proposing for future rate increases is somewhat of a circle shop. And as you know, we have pastbers. So we've adopted their schedule, which was an eight percent increase over the next, well, what was five years? What they're now proposing is December first.
Just tell us.
I'm getting there. December first of twenty twenty-five or sooner, an eight percent increase.
On top of the other eight?
Yeah. I thought they said it was that for the next five years.
Is that sixteen or is that eight?
That, I, I don't know. I have to get further clarification, but ten one of twenty-six, they're proposing sixteen percent. And that goes sewer and water. And then twelve percent each year thereafter. So I asked them that they give us at least a two to three month time to review our rates and hire a consultant.
Eight percent by December and I can write this down.
Eight, eight percent? I can give you this paper.
What's their justification and does it impact us?
Capital projects is their biggest thing. So expanding their water out off of corkscrew and then rebuilding the beach reclamation facility. Mainly capital projects is keeping up with the infrastructure. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So we're monitoring this. We're going to keep a pulse on it and see what happens.
So basically, we're paying for something that won't directly benefit us.
No.
Does that sound like you're.
That we don't use, right?
Yeah, I think it's everything from natural, that way.
That sounds like a park, you know, in that conversation.
To be fair.
He's joining us.
You were emailed, you all were.
But we don't have any choice ever.
You got red.
We're not negotiating on that, right?
No.
Because everyone pays the same thing regardless?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a commercial ball.
You were all emailed from Randy and visually in the audit at the next.
I took a picture.
At the next committee, at your next meeting, you will be turning your hat and being an audit selection committee. That's per statute. So make sure you get those, your evaluations into Randy. You have it already.
Just for these two firms.
Yes, just for the two firms. Those were the only two that were submitted.
And then Carol, yours are still at the, because you're not a.
Did anybody talk to, like, why they didn't?
Okay, so you can handle that every day.
We're going to call them.
Yeah, not yet.
But I mean, the times.
One inside, five years.
They were notified.
You'll get a.
Prior to going in. Lastly, Carrie handed out the red, white and pool itinerary. Again, would love for you to show up if you would like to volunteer your time, if you needed any, if you want to help out. I know a couple of yous on there in the past. So you can kind of see.
You'll have, I think.
Yeah, so you can kind of see the itinerary. That is.
I didn't see Ed there.
That was there.
He did the first.
No, but every year.
We might have more words.
Oh.
I just got a, for your estimate, the auditor, Stephen just shot me a note. He said Jay Gaines is retiring, so that might be why they didn't. Okay.
Yeah, because we, we received an audit opinion letter from one of my other districts and so my assistant contacted and that's where Jay Gaines and they said he's retired.
Lucky him. So Red, White and Pool is Saturday, June twenty-eighth from ten to two, if you'd like to participate. One other, two other things.
Oh, it's really nice. Paul Leo's running, one of our sponsors, which is our chair for the project for next one.
Yeah. So in July, the first meeting in July is July third. I know some of you take and travel for the Fourth of July. So I didn't know if you wanted to hold that meeting or not.
I will be away.
Okay, I'll be here.
I will not be here.
I was going to, okay.
You're always in for jail also.
I will also be away, but I will be, I will be joining.
I'll be here.
So I didn't know if you wanted to cancel the meeting or.
I think our agenda's been pretty quiet lately. I think we could probably skip the meeting.
Skip the meeting.
Skip the third?
I wasn't going to skip, but since you're all skipping, I will skip.
I mean, I would take your, your recommendation.
I would, I would just, because either way, if you had it, we would make it a light agenda.
But.
I think we just skip.
Got to passport with it.
So. I make a motion that we cancel July thirty.
I'll second your motion.
And workshop.
I'll, I'll second your motion. On favor?
Aye. All right. And then we'll send this, we'll email this out. So we're gearing up for next fiscal year. We have a lot of board meetings. Well, we have one board meeting scheduled for January first. So as we get closer, we need to evaluate those dates and some of the safety and securities and landscaping meeting, they fall, you know, near holidays. So we'll send this out and then we'll bring this up at the next board meeting as an agenda item for discussion.
Do you need volunteers for the red line?
We always need volunteers.
Okay. We just going to email to like this because they need.
Have them email Carrie. Have them email Carrie directly.
Thirty hours.
That would be someone really nice to post to, because needing about three hours for next year.
Ready to...
Can you service all of these? Were there schools required?
Yeah, she's used to needs another thirty hours of rent.
Volunteers. Okay, that's, that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. District manager, oh, you wanna bypass that, we just go through the rest of them? All right, so go ahead and let's talk about district manager annual review. She brought you a cookie.
That's why I paid for those too.
District could not pay for those.
All right, none of them will be shy about it, let's start.
I'd like to suggest a seven percent raise on the base.
Okay.
With no merit increase this year. I was, I, I think, basically, when you look at the ratings, they were all threes, which means she met our expectations last year. I was a little disappointed in my personal, my personal opinion is that there were maybe some times during the methodology discussions that I felt that staff had in, had put their opinions in when they shouldn't have. This was a board decision and this was a board process and not, I didn't, I think we had enough experts that the board should have talked to the experts and staff should not have had expressed opinions on things. And I think that happened a couple times and for whatever reason, it is what it is. So I would like to suggest seven percent just on the base.
What's the percentage we're giving to the other employees?
Four.
Maximum four?
I, I can't work on doing that, maybe the differential. That's not right. Not right. Whatever we're giving the employees on the base, I would give to the...
Different responsibilities.
Do what?
Different responsibilities. You, I don't, I don't know many corporations or any companies that have the same bone structure for the hourly employees.
A ton of base. Base.
Same thing?
Base out, not merit.
So what would you like to do for, I'm gonna tell you here, so what do you like for base and what do you like for...
I would have a four percent on the base and I would go three percent on the...
You mean on merit?
On merit.
Merit or bonus?
Can I summarize my evaluation?
Yeah.
My, or my own internal review. We went through a lot this last year between refillable six, the assessment methodology, budgets, hurricanes. There were a lot of external factors that I feel like had those not been there, this evaluation may be a little bit different. I do acknowledge that the public image, maybe not necessarily of myself, maybe, maybe it's because I, I am your manager, I am, you know, I, I implement the policies that you create. Sometimes those can be misconceived, but that's my job, is whatever the majority of the board chooses, I implement. So I think that's why my, the public image is perhaps lower on some of these. And I think the program management, that's no surprise, I think with Parks and Rec coming up more, coming on board, that we could give that up a little bit more. But overall, I think we accomplished a lot in last year, you know, look at, I, I look at the pond projects. I mean, granted, we had, we had and have a great staff to support me and to support you. And without them, I couldn't, I couldn't do everything that you put in front of me. Hopefully, they can slow down a little bit, but I personally feel that I have met, if not exceeded, expectations. If weeds on a pond bank is my biggest issue that I have to deal with, I'll take that all day every day. But it's been a pleasure serving with us last year, and I look forward to the, the next year and so on.
I, I think the role of district manager is a very challenging role. I don't know how we're evaluating that public image, how we're evaluating that, but I'm looking at, did we achieve our goals as a whole? Are we able to operate on a daily basis, monthly basis? And it seems like we are doing that. So I have no problem with the, with the work you're doing, I think you're doing great. There's always areas of improvement, but it's, the role is challenged by nature. As far as increase, what were you, what were you asking for?
I would go close to the top if not the top. I don't care how you cut it between merit and bonus, but ten percent is fourteen thousand. And not to toot my own horn, but I did get this district a million dollar grant and more forthcoming. You pay your engineers a lot more than fourteen thousand dollars a week. Granted, granted their license and everything, but that's, but if I don't toot my own horn, nobody else will.
I just, I'm cautious sometimes with just looking at percentages, because you really have to look at what the existing comp is, where that is in the competitive range. And that's basically what we just said, is we want to make sure that the ranges are competitive. And I think in the market, when I, I pulled it up and I was doing the research, I think the midpoint that I saw was around one fifty to one sixty. Now again, that does include some, you know, some variability there, because it's kind of, kind of hard to find a district manager role within a community development district, there's just not a whole lot of those actors, so it's really hard to get some of the comps. But I think what I felt was comparable with midpoint is like that, and what I saw was around one fifty.
You mean with thirty thousand?
It was one, at one forty-five to one sixty was the...
You're at one, yeah, one forty-three, it's a change. One forty-three, two.
The relationship between public reserve, particularly the subcommittee chairman, and district staff improved greatly in last year, very happy to see that. The way staff supports the projects and things, it's been very, very effective. The implementation of the ITQ process has been very favorable for us, it was a hell of a lot of money. And as you said, the grants, the only negative thing that I've got, of course, is World Sex and Connectivity, and I go along with Cal's comments. I didn't feel there was as much neutrality there as I would like to have seen. All in all, I tickle pink the organization, the way it functions, I get information in time, you know, I have no problem with it, you know. And a special shout out to the works you've done at the Conservation Six, which hasn't been a, you know, a no-brainer. The biggest disappointment I have, and I continue to have, is I would like to see a simple timekeeping system that would be more accurate, more accurately reflect what people are actually working on. And I know I'm a minority on that, but that's still technical, so... Thank you.
So I need a percentage for me?
So...
I need a percentage of that.
I was gonna go three, three percent.
Base?
Base. And four percent bonus.
So two ones, a seven percent, okay.
I mean, I think anywhere between, you know, seven and a half to ten is reasonable to get you anywhere from ten to fourteen K, which would, again, from what I saw, get closer to a midpoint around that one.
My, my only request is if you do anything less than ten, I'd like to know specifically what I can work on next year to get to that ten percent. Or if there's any, anything that you can directly...
Well, how close to the top? How close to the top?
She doesn't have a cap, she's the only one that doesn't, except by you guys. So you, you, the board determines her salary range.
That's probably...
She's the only exception.
What we have.
Yeah, and corporate history is rare to get anybody that'll get ten percent. To say it's not doing a great job, but all. But seven percent without a change in...
Well, let's think about this, so here's something to think about. So if we just said, staff's gonna do an evaluation, and we had talked about giving a flat three percent across the board, you know, two and a half, three percent, maybe you said three.
Maybe it's the seven that...
And then, and then if we're looking at, if we want to do market comps, you know, again, I can get you, I, I can do more due diligence and get you a dollar amount, but again, what I saw through, through the market intelligence platforms that I have, this was around one, one fifty. So which would be, you know, anywhere from, you know, from really like a ten, a ten percent increase. If we're saying everyone gets a three, then we're left with a seven, and if seven is what would take, get her to midpoint, then I think, you know, that would be reasonable. So we could include, if we wanted to, we could include the three percent that we're gonna do across the board in this, go to ten, and it would be actually justified.
And then, and then she won't get the three later on when everybody else may get it.
That's, I mean, because we do this, we do, we do your bump now, which is outside, which is outside of staff cycle.
Oh, she doesn't get it.
She gets, hers is different, she is the only employee that gets her review at her anniversary date. The rest of us get all of our stuff at the start of the festival.
So she would be excluded from what we just talked about, so then a ten percent, so then in my eyes, because it looks like the consensus is a seven percent from all of us on Monday. No, add two, because it's four and three, so seven will be, will be the increase plus the addition of three.
So be ten percent.
So be the ten percent.
And again, I don't want to squabble over a couple grand for, for the top tier of our, of our organization.
I think what we may want to do then, to make sure it's clear on the record, is agree to, we need to amend the agreement to increase the cap, et cetera.
There is no cap.
There is no cap.
Well, right now, it's up to four percent of the prior year pay salary, a bonus of up to six percent of the prior year pay salary.
Well, that's, that's ten percent, so six and four, that's ten, so it's, we stay within...
I'm not bound by that, they can change that every year.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I think it needs both parties to agree to change that. If you want to change it, make it to four, to three and seven, move to ten.
It doesn't matter, four and six.
But you need to, because you have...
We said a minimum was three, we could go higher than that.
Yes, but no, but you're saying that we can do ten.
Yes.
We just cannot break down three and seven, you have to break down four and six, unless you amend that.
Yeah.
What I would suggest is that the first action would be for the board to approve an amendment to the March twenty, twenty twenty-two employment engagement letter to change the bonus up to eight percent as opposed to...
I just say take it out, take any numbers out and just that it's up to the board at the time of the review.
Up to you if you, I...
You could change, you can...
I don't have a problem with that.
That gives you a lot more latitude.
Not that you would ever go over ten percent.
Because it also could, it also would allow us to go under, someone was underperforming. Not you, but if we had someone underperforming, we could say, look, we're going to zero.
So what, in other words, it's important to say eligible consideration for annual merit slash cost of living adjustment and, and bonus. A percentage bonus based on the prior salary, as determined by the board.
Yeah, as determined by the board.
So that, the board would make a motion to approve, to the engagement, to do that, effective as of, I'd say July first, excuse me, June first, twenty twenty-five.
Her anniversary date is May sixteenth, which is what you guys agreed to last...
May sixteen, fact, retroactive to May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. And then I'll prepare that, Chelsea'll sign it, Lavi'll sign it.
So you're moving it to ten percent max?
No.
We're just pulling it, we're just pulling the percentages out altogether, and it'll be at our discretion. So we could go zero or we could go whatever.
You could do just, just a bonus instead of a merit or nothing.
Okay.
So I would just make the motion that we, we award...
First of all...
First we got it.
To amend the, May twenty, March twenty, twenty-two employment retain, engagement agreement to remove the caps and provide that the merit, cost of living and bonus are at the discretion of the board.
Seven percent.
So that's your motion, I'll second that motion. I'll call it for discussion, huh? On stage, right? Aye. Aye, he, he, not aye, 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 he's talking.
I want to make sure it's clear in my head. Do we consider, and I'm not opposed to it, however, whatever that is, but if we consider it in terms of cost of living, I guess that's about three percent right now, whatever the total number of, and then a raise of three percent, that's six, and four for bonus, so I guess I got to the same then, but I'm getting there kind of a different way.
Yeah.
Because I didn't give out ten percent raises my forty-year career unless there was a promotion. I recognize, but I don't want to lose her either, that's a couple bucks either way, I'm with Doug, but that way I can...
And I don't think it even matters.
Let's first not get into that conversation, because that doesn't affect the motion that we have on the floor. So the motion on the floor is just to remove the percentage out of the current engagement. So I'm gonna call it up for a vote, so we have a motion by Doug, second by Carol, right?
Yes.
You did.
Okay, so motion by Doug, second by Mia, call all in favor to remove the percentage out of the engagement letter.
All right.
Aye.
And then, right, you go with two.
May.
Aye.
It should be in there.
Okay, now we're gonna try to...
The follow-up motion would just, I would just keep it, however we calculate it in our head, I don't think we need to go to that. I think we're just, my motion would be to, to award the increase at ten percent.
Well, but it's important to understand whether it's base salary or not. Because the next year...
Yeah, it is.
So it's not a bonus, it's a base salary increase?
So she's not getting a bonus, you're just giving her a flat on ten percent raise.
I don't care how you cut the ten percent. If I, I would recommend what Bob suggested is the three, three, four, I'm fine with that.
Yep. What was the, what was the three, three, four, it was three?
Three percent cost of living, three percent merit. Four percent bonus.
So six percent pay raise and four percent bonus.
What did I get last year?
Okay, so...
Well, I, if it's less than last year for a base, then...
I don't think you got that much for a base.
I think you got four last year.
Yeah, I think it was four instead.
Well, I'll still stay with the three. But it's a prior year's base salary, so it's whatever you're getting now is the base for this calculation.
I know, but the base for next year would, would be...
It would go higher.
Was higher or lower, that's what you want to know.
It would go higher, if the salary goes higher.
I'm sorry, Bob, say your thing again.
Well, I think it's a three, three, three percent cost of living, three percent merit, four percent bonus.
She got, last year she gave her...
So basically, six percent on the base.
Correct.
Four percent bonus.
Last year you gave her a three percent base and base merit, whatever, and a three percent bonus, so it was a total of six percent.
So then it's a higher now, okay, so then, then we're looking at six percent base.
Six and four.
And four.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the one.
That's my motion.
That's motion, okay, so six percent increase on base, four percent on bonus. So I have a motion on the floor by, Bob, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by, yeah, it's a little bit, okay, Eric.
By Laura.
Now, the motion, the second, on favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
I think it would have been really neat.
And just to clear my...
Pelican to have a first and second on that.
It's retro to her, her anniversary date. For, for... So let's clarify, so...
It's effective as of May sixteenth.
Yes, yes.
That's what's her anniversary date.
Yes.
Probably I'll have something for you to sign.
So the next meeting, I'll have sandwiches. Instead of cooking.
Whatever, it's my actor.
And not, and not leaning water.
Fill for the good box, I'll bring koozies.
You have to get the stuff from the top of the pallet.
How about getting it from a different shelf, like one shelf above where you get it?
I mean, this?
Come on. Do I need to make a motion that we upgrade our water for board meetings?
All right, so we have that.
I think you should be more environmentally conscious, just be more environmentally conscious, bring your own containers, you don't have to worry about the bottles.
Do like me, don't drink water. Look at me, my coffee says no water.
I can't afford Starbucks.
So let's go ahead and district a thirty item, do you have anything for us?
They're just working on the number of the projects, you heard some of them, mostly not really gendered, so... Do you have any questions?
Yes. Your correspondence back and forth with Jennifer Kolinsky?
Yes, ma'am.
And the Public and Preserve Community Association concerns, et cetera, et cetera. I'm assuming since the last email that we all got from you was your response to Jennifer, that the ball is in her court right now?
Yes, I've not heard anything back.
You have?
I have not.
Is there a date that, she said something in her thing that she may release something when it was public, public knowledge or public...
Publicly available, publicly available, I think is what she said.
Okay, is there a date for that?
She did not provide a date, so I'm not sure which, what date she meant.
Well, I didn't want to bug you.
No, no bother.
Until...
No bother.
You know, until the date or whatever, okay, that's all I have.
Future board business? And, I should amend it, do you, anybody has any questions? Which I, just I, I do, I know, I usually don't let you present all this, because I figured it's a lot easier if you have questions, because otherwise, we can just be... So Bob, do you have anything to add or nothing?
Nope.
Doug, I should amend it, nothing? Nothing, okay.
Okay, I see that we're supposed to have a workshop on July third.
We canceled the workshop.
And, but we canceled that meeting, so is it possible to have a workshop at the next meeting on the nineteenth?
I'm good with that.
To talk about the budget?
Yeah.
We'll be passing the high water mark next Thursday, and then we can start the... Reducing that?
Yeah.
What's, what's the date? If we skip the July meeting, we have one meeting, or skip the first July meeting, we have one meeting, then when's that August meeting?
August twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
So you have two meetings.
You have July seventeen, August fifth, and, well, yeah, you actually have June nineteen, July seventeen, August fifth.
No, you're off.
No, July third, so be the seventeen.
Seventeen.
Then...
Seven, twenty-one.
Seven, and then twenty-one, I was thinking...
You can always have this, that...
Always have another meeting.
So you have one in June, one in July, and two in August. So you have one in June, one in July, and two in August.
The public area is the August.
Yeah.
The twenty, twenty-first is what the resolution, proposed resolution is already.
You have not adopted it, it's not that big yet.
All right, so let's go ahead and add a workshop to the nineteenth at two o'clock.
Let me back up. I do have one other topic, and I covered this a little bit with Laura, not with that. But as I'm going through the, the budgets to understand how we get to the numbers in the pocket, specifically O two, as I go through it, the change from last year to this year is, I guess this is the result, silos. And there, I, I get an N number of what we're charged, and I'm gonna try and work with staff that the individual components, if they impact O two only, that somehow that be designated here, they have a different color, maybe a P or something. But I would like to be able to sit down, take a budget book, and specifically understand how my total assessment is, and that it's specifically impacting Pelican.
The fact that you didn't have silos last year makes it a little bit more difficult.
It does. It's, you know, I can do it, I know what the Pelican Reserve Safety Group gets, what the Landscape Group gets, what the pond gets, and even what that other operational part is. Those are locked in. It's when I get down to the below the line, I'll call it, that I get kind of mystified. And that's a very dynamic and changing. But I just want to let you know about proposing we change the, these sheets in any manner or form, whether it's an asterisk or a P or something, that helps us have that in mind. Thank you.
All right, so Carol, you had anything else? Does it add?
Oh, are we like commissioner of comments or whatever?
Oh, no, no, anything else for the agenda management? Oh, no, so, okay, so nothing else. So let's go ahead and go supervise the comment and anything else.
Yeah. In just looking at the dollars that we add on the assessment chart, it seems that for Parks and Recreation for Pelican Preserve, single-family homes are going to be paying one hundred and eleven thousand, three oh five seventy-five. Multi-family homes are going to be paying fifty-five thousand, three eighty-five ninety-five. And the golf course is going to be paying sixty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. That's a total of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. I would like the board to give direction to the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee that we, that approximately one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars be used towards amen, in, in, for twenty-six, in the twenty-six budget. Be used for items and amenities that Pelican Preserve currently does not have. So, um.
Could that also include programs? Or are you talking about physical amenities?
Well, I was, I was thinking physical amenities, but like Pelican doesn't have a bike path. Pelican doesn't have a walking path. I mean, you can walk on the streets, and you can ride your bike in the streets, but we don't have a designated walking path or biking path. We don't have a gym set. So if your grandkids come over and you wanna take them to the swings or whatever.
Because they're so young.
We don't, we don't have gardens. I'm sure there are other things that I didn't even think of.
Okay.
But I would, at least for this next year, I would like us to look at spending a hundred, basically a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars on things, recreational things that Pelican does not have. Now, whether Pelican people then avail themselves of those things or not, or whatever, that's completely enough to know. But at least the board can say that we're starting to offer things that are not duplicate.
Carol, can you send us what programs that you guys offer? Or your, your lifestyle guide or whatever it is that you guys have over there, so Carol can look at that and start to plan programs?
Amenities.
And then amenities.
Because Doug always mentioned that, like, we are very underused to, like, we always wanna do something with the seniors, and even the Pelican is fifty-five and over, something to do it over here. So it's kind of both.
Our amenities should, should represent the demographics in our community. It should be.
The big one you guys, what you mentioned, the bike path and the walkover, was, that's, that's an ease of relation issue that you have to create.
Well, yeah, I don't know that there's.
That, that one might, that, that one might be difficult.
But did we, we walk and pass on those?
I'm just saying. Those are the items they don't have, so look into whatever else.
And maybe, and maybe they have others.
And maybe they want something totally different that they don't have because they don't want it, yeah.
Maybe they want one of those exercise things, although most of us are over way over fifty-five. And we're not gonna go walk and then do chin-ups and all that sort of stuff.
And I think the focus is, kind of getting back to Paulie's point, I mean, my vision, and I think we all, we probably say it's our vision as well, but our amenities should be utilized and represented across our different demographics. So instead of saying like this is set aside for Pelican gaps, I'd say it's a seniors. So for those that are fifty-five and older, that we should have dedicated amenities and programs for that demographic. And it's, I think it's really important. And, and I think it would directly point to Pelican, but there, in Gateway Greens and Stony Brook, and every community has the same type of individuals. However, they don't have access to, to the Pelican resources, but I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, and we should be looking at that.
Well, I will say this, and I'll take over this. I would not support putting a specific amenity, be it a playground or anything else, within Pelican.
No, no.
If, if that would require.
Pelican fund.
Totally open access, and we would lose control.
No, 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 she was talking about in the comments, right? That's what I.
She's talking about.
In the comments or.
In the part here, you're making sure that there's amenities there.
But not, not physically within the footprint.
No, 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 no. Add the comments, make sure that.
I misunderstood.
Just, oh, a Parks and Rec amenity that is not duplicate of something that Pelican and probably others have. For instance, Pelican doesn't need another swimming pool. And I suspect that there are other places. I mean, Stony Brook has their own, Gateway Greens probably has their own. Well, there are other communities that have their own pools and stuff. So I don't think, I don't, I'd like to see money going to other ideas other than, let's put in another.
Pool.
Let's put in, you know, something that somebody already has and probably are not gonna use. But there might be a chance that they would use, I don't know, a victory garden type thing or something. I don't know.
Or, or for bringing that you guys have so much demand that you need overlook.
It, what we're trying to combat here is, Pelican, and as an example, and for those others, like, we're paying for something we already have. Okay, well, let's change that. Let's offer something that you don't have, and so therefore you think, okay, so I'm paying additional money that people could use because we, we don't have that today. At least we're helping solve.
And if we use it, we use it. If we don't, they don't.
Yeah.
Okay. But you have all of Gateway that can use it too.
So we're just, let's just earmark, let's see where the gaps are, and then we can make sure that we're allocating resources or, or just saying, hey, we're gonna have walking trails at the new Parks and.
And, and I hope it comes out of practice, really where it shouldn't be.
Right. Yeah, I, I think we should, we should ask the Parks and Recreation Committee to come back with suggestions.
I agree.
We had Mr. Slowfield on the committee now too, so you had a lot of.
We do?
Good old Joe.
And Joe was here too.
He never runs out of ideas.
There you go, okay. Anything?
That's all I have.
Anything for, what has come?
Yeah, a couple of those. Where are we at with sound litigation on the pickleball that's been raised?
Oh, that's gonna be a biggie. That's gonna be a biggie.
Oh, it really is.
I believe we were, I reviewed an article before I went on vacation that went out.
I think it went out two days after, and I have, I spoke with a few of the residents from, um, I spoke with, I spoke with a few residents from Pelican Park, and the consensus that I received, then I told them, I said, if you have any concerns, please email us, and it was zero. So it was one or two that had a concern, because one person mentioned it wasn't as big of a issue.
The one that I got from is a professional, what do you call it, audi, audiologist.
Yeah, we got that one.
Everybody got that too.
Yeah.
I just, I just think there's potential here. I agree with you.
We just gotta keep an eye on it, and we gotta do some studies and make sure we.
And the other issue is. Other issue is where do we stand with the incident up on.
The amusement?
FPL Eastman.
Actually, the captain called me today.
What, what incident?
Where the kid went off-roading.
We had a kid, a kid back, come off of the Gateway Boulevard onto the FPL Eastman and then drove into our flowway.
Those seventy thousand dollars worth of damage or so?
So Captain Benora called, oh, yeah, you weren't last name.
No, you were, you voted.
No, she wasn't here last year.
Month and a half.
She was there. She was here, because she voted, I remember.
No, she was saying, no. She was there. I was here May first.
All of you.
Captain.
Carol, what, what was it?
Captain Benora called.
I wasn't here.
Um, today, and they had touched base with the, the parents of that child, and the parent asked if they could try to work it out with us. Captain Benora called me today and asked if I had heard from the mother, which I had not, and I told him, I said, if you talk to her, have her call me. You know, if, if they wanna try to pay for the damages instead of going through the court system, you know, let us know. But I haven't heard anything, and so he was proceeding with the, the connection.
My, my guess is what they want is they wanna differentiate.
They wanna say, let's just move this rock a little bit this way, because they don't understand the concept.
Yeah, yeah, felonies are not pretty indirect, yes.
No, especially if you're twenty. Twenty-year-old women or kids?
Yep.
Yep. I had still there.
That's a problem.
Nothing else? I forgot everything.
It's hurricane season, prepare yourself.
Okay, um, Doug, I'll go last, if we don't remember.
And I assume we're gonna be pushing out like what, what we do for preparedness.
We started to.
We do, we have.
We have.
In Pelican last month about preparedness, Carol's husband organized, the meteorologist, I don't remember what. When she came and did a presentation, and she had excellent slides, excellent slides. I've got the, we, we have it on, I guess YouTube or something, and it's available.
Oh, yeah.
If you wanna push that out.
Put that link out.
Maybe we invite them here and come do.
Now, I'm sure they would. They love doing it.
Meteorologist.
But they did a great job.
ABC, Carol.
It's a lady, Allison, somebody, Allison, what?
I, I don't know her name.
Allison Ray.
Allison Ray.
But she really did it. She was well-prepared and explained an awful, awful lot. An excellent presentation.
And then Carol Brocki actually was the one who gave local, so just for Pelican, you know, about P. Pert and some of the other things, and what they do, and what kind of, um, what they do at the front gate and all that sort of stuff. So Allison spoke for about forty-five minutes, and then Carol had about fifteen.
Awesome.
Bob? Okay, so I, I didn't remember all, but I knew the loss, I remember now. So I know we follow up with all the lights at the roundabout eighteen months, and you said that Paul had reached out to the school. None of the lights, the streetlights are working again.
Who, Griffin?
Griffin, by the high school, so I know we haven't followed that. I know we had an accident across the street from Stony Brook.
Yeah.
We know the.
What happened there?
We just dribbled.
You look like you're drunk or you're a skunk.
Okay.
How do you get your car to mount the, and SUV mounted the median as you pull into Stony Brook? Mounted it going the wrong direction?
No, no, no.
I mean, I saw the, I saw the damage, and I didn't see.
I saw what happened.
They took down a stop sign.
I will.
Knocked a tree down.